Good evening and thank you, Robert Feaster, for giving me the clearance to start. Welcome to early work session of the State Council. Today is Tuesday, February 13th, and the meeting is called Order at 6:15. Let the record show all council members present. Number one on the agenda is a presentation of a life-saving award to Officers of Highland Village Police Department Chief Ryan.
So I'll sort of explain or set this up. Normally, we would do this as at a council meeting, but I really appreciate the opportunity to bring it in here for an early session. Because we're 24/7 operation, these guys are either getting off of work tonight or off or whatnot. So hang on to them for another hour and a half tonight before that meeting was just always touch and go. And as it turned out, we almost missed one of them because he was wrestling with somebody out there on a fight call. So I won't give the scenario. We're just gonna play the video first, and then we can talk about it afterwards. And I'll talk about the video after. I'll tell you upfront, hopefully click that, Laurie. So we bought into with council support, Axon equipment for all of our things. It has some redaction capabilities. We got a chance to really exercise them in this video, over-exercise them, you'll see. But we found out a lot of things doing it, the capabilities or the lack of at the level that we bought into. So time-wise, it was easier to do it, blocking everybody's faces out. So you're not gonna see these guys' faces. You're gonna have to guess who they are, okay? It's pretty easy, but you'll figure it out. Anyway, let's watch that video, and then we can get on with what we're at.
It's okay, it's okay.
What did you take?
Um, I need to get all my fentanyl. Just relapsed today.
Hey Corporal, come get him down real quick. Possible fentanyl overdose. If you can step out of your place.
Okay.
Certified dispatch, possible fentanyl overdose.
Hey. Come again.
Turn to one dose Narcan, Minister.
Adult mode. Remove all clothing from patient's chest.
Wake up, sir.
Pull red handle to reveal pads.
What time, who's got time?
Look at pictures on pads. Apply pads to your skin exactly as shown in the pictures. Press pads firmly.
Got a pulse. Hey, sir, wake up, wake up. You gotta wake up, buddy. I'm laying with the pads on just a second. Hey, what's his name?
Remove clothing from patient's chest.
Wake up, wake up, wake up.
To reveal. Do not touch patient. Analyzing heart rhythm. No shock advised. Provide chest compressions to the beat. The heel of one hand should be in center of chest. The other hand should be on top of first hand. Push down hard at least two inches.
Bending this mouth. Can we get it airway?
Yeah, can we get it out airway?
Yeah, if one. Wake up, buddy. Oh, it's not for a second, let's get in there. All right, hey, take it easy, take it easy, just let it, all right, breathe. All right, okay, just breathe.
Keep that for me, okay? Good, we're back.
Just keep breathing, we're here to help you, all right? We're here to help you.
Remember to push hard.
Sergeant Flowers spoke with Austin, how are you feeling? How are you feeling? You all right? Just keep breathing, okay?
What did you take? What did you take?
Push down hard at least two inches.
Just stay laid out.
Stay laid out.
The medics are gonna come check on you, okay? Looks like you had an overdose, all right? We gave you some Narcan. And you were looking pretty bad for a little bit, so just relax, just breathe, the medics are coming to take care of you.
Remember to push hard.
I wanna go to the medics.
What do you think? So put Sergeant Flowers in charge if you want to ask him questions for a given award. You're all there.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions if you got them.
Well, what, what was caused? I didn't hear it.
Fentanyl, fentanyl overdose.
Was it on purpose or laced?
Uh, probably laced, I don't think it was intentional.
How do you not, you go in, is that why you have the gloves on? Because if you touch it, can it get you sick too?
It can, yes. So that's why, yeah, we always make sure we have the gloves on before we go to something like this or any medical call, really. Just make sure we have our proper PPE equipment.
And you administer Narcan?
Yes.
So you've got that in your, your kits?
Yes, sir. I knew that white AED yourself is carrying in. There was two doses of Narcan, or two injector administers of Narcan, in each one of those cases we carried.
So when were you trained to do this? So didn't come in the academy?
It wasn't in the academy, no, we recently started this program, probably about.
It was like a couple months before.
Within the last year, did you say?
Yeah, so we can go back on ECA program that we implemented five or six, seven years ago. Two of these three guys are ECA certified or two. On the end, five virtue of his timing coming into dispatch has been held back a little bit. So I truly believe the ECA program gives you guys a little more confidence when we have to deal with medical emergencies. So they had AEDs out there, they had the fentanyl. Fentanyl came out, policy change, it just became really easy for us to get easier than just the fire department having it in a meeting. We have weekly meetings with all, a public safety meeting, and we try to, during those meetings, brainstorm, move our procedures to the next level. So I came back from a meeting with DEA SAC who lives in Montana, who was talking about some various programs where you could get it and the benefits of it in the police cars on top of it. Otherwise, fire department only had it. One of the best things is that, you know, being a small department here in the city and the calls for service that we've had, we've always responded to medical calls, that's what helped our ECA program sort of get off the ground. But then it also is that we were able to, I don't know what the stats are, I don't wanna keep track of who's beating who getting the calls, but those guys are tied up, if you've heard the stats, over the last year and a half, two years too, they're tied up in mutual aid calls or other calls. So it allowed us, you know, that luck and timing is really what it came down to, three guys being there, so.
How long was the guy down by the time y'all got there, do you know?
Uh, like.
It could have been.
Could have been, she didn't know, she left and came home and found him on the floor.
Was he, was he breathing when y'all showed up?
He was not, that's why we started doing the chest compressions.
He's doing this thing called agonal breathing, which is your body's response to dying. Your body starts trying to breathe, gasping for air. It doesn't sound regular at all, but to the untrained person, it just sounds like they're trying to gasp for air, does that make sense? But it's called agonal breathing.
And you looked 911 to the front door. Response time.
Uh, that information I don't have.
Okay.
From the one tall is.
Close to death though.
It's very close.
Within three minutes.
And y'all said you think that it was something that had fentanyl in it, not just straight, I mean.
Right, yeah.
How often are we seeing that in the city?
Again, I don't wanna throw out a number on that one for sure.
Just.
It's a major.
Throw that one down.
Is it, is it a lot?
Is it increased number from last year?
Okay.
This is our first mention.
Well, I asked, I asked, I have a personal relationship with drug, it's how my mom died thirty something years ago, back before fentanyl was popular. So I always have an interest in stories like this.
This was a double dose, I don't know if you caught that or not.
No, I didn't catch that.
And then how do you give it?
I heard it was a relapse.
It was a nose spray. Okay.
Nose spray versus.
If they're not breathing, how did, does it just absorb in the skin? Okay.
It opened their nasal cavity, I think it shoots up.
That gets into the system pretty rapidly when you go through the nasal cavity, right?
And if that doesn't work, I don't like, that fire department has other ways to hit it in the street.
Ours is intermenius, which is a little more, but that's, that's, that's the first line right there.
That is super.
Hell of a job, hell of a job, guys.
Yeah, fantastic.
You're not seeing an uptick in fentanyl and stuff like, even in the city, whether we're finding it on people, unless it's always overdoses, but getting it off the street.
In situations like this, you know, assuming the guy makes a full recovery, do you, do you guys go back and try to find out, how did you get it? Where'd you get it from? Is there any kind of?
There's follow-up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Our little city.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. But would you wanna read one of these, Mayor?
Sure, sure. Happy to.
Read from there if you so desire.
So this is for Officer Arturo Flores in recognition of life-saving actions on December 14th, 2023, while at the scene of a narcotics overdose medical emergency and demonstrating swift and decisive action by administering life-saving measures including, I don't even know how to pronounce that.
Na, naloxone?
Naloxone?
MJ's naloxone?
Yes. Naloxone and performing CPR, which prevented a tragic loss of life. Your service reflects greatly on your character, flexibility, and dedication to duty. December 14th, 2023, Chief Dogg.
So they all say the same thing.
Thanks, sir.
Picture, we got a picture.
I would like to do it in the lobby.
Oh, okay.
So it would say, um.
Yeah, cuz.
Probably not, it's very.
So also, um, the SROs carry their packs at school, they have it ready to go there also, so little, it's really just been amazing. I think they're, the winning the fight that we supported for, for the drug recap program or the forfeiture, whatever the lawsuit paid for, they have a program where they're administering it now to parents also, they teach a class to parents, to anybody who wants to listen to say, you carry it as a civilian now. Back four years ago, it was, you couldn't do that, you couldn't get your hands on it, fire department the only people who could have it, so changed a lot.
Is there an uptake in our schools?
We have been, uh, not, not in Highland Village.
The high school?
Uh, I don't know the numbers, Marcus, but there's been some instances over in the Hebron feeders.
Safe to say they're gonna continue. I mean, the numbers will continue to grow, so these guys get better and more aware of it in the past. This is a good exercise for us to, for the rest of the department, understand the value and how quickly to administer it. You can't, you can't kill someone with it. If you saw the AEDs that we carry also, they're, they walk you through the whole process.
That was impressive.
It's gonna tell you if it's got, if you got a heartbeat, tell you to use it, it walks you through that whole process.
That is kind of amazing.
You said that there is approximately fifteen minutes before that you think he was out, correct? How long can you administer this and be effective if somebody's taking it?
Long after the fact?
How long after the fact, yeah? Not the volunteers for that one.
It sounds like this case is maybe on the edge.
It was probably on that, but he was kind of turning blueish-purple, like he wouldn't get him on oxygen.
I personally thought it was gonna be deceased person called when I got there, inside of the state and how he looked. Thank God, did not turn out that way.
So very close then. Yeah, responding medics from the fire department said they wouldn't have administered it.
I don't think they got him back, is what they said, that's what they told me too. But the time difference really depends on the dosage that it's laced with, is it, you know, is it cut with, is the pill cut with it? What that strength is, so it's, if it's in a more pure form, it's less time, so. There's not a hard fast rule of what it's gonna be.
Well, the guys that are manufacturing it, they don't care. I mean, it's fentanyl, most of you, if you've ever had surgery, you've probably been put to sleep with fentanyl. So, but it's measured very, very by your body weight and everything when they, when an anesthesiologist administers it, but these drug dealers, they don't care.
Mayor, I might add, I watched the video earlier, and I've seen some other videos with our officers in high-stress situations, and they do an admirable job. They just perform in an excellent manner, so.
Thank you all very much for.
The ECA program, that was one of the best decisions any council's ever made, implementing the ECA program.
It don't work in every city, I will always add that, but it does work, it works pretty darn well here right now. I don't know if anyone didn't ask Corporal McGlaughlin while he was strumming on that guy's chest, that was a trained tactic, okay? It wasn't, he was just exercising his fists there, okay? So if you don't respond to that, you're pretty out of life, okay? It's, it's pretty awakening, even if you're drunker, you can imagine it works, so.
Thank you all.
Thanks for.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get to follow that.
I know.
All right, I remember too, on the agenda is an overview of the city secretary's office. I think you were gonna tee it up before she goes.
I will, I just wanna mention the mayor and council. We're, this is the first of a series, and we'll be doing some departmental reports and updates, so Angie's gonna kick it off. The next meeting, we should have police and fire doing this.
It's not gonna be nearly as exciting as it seems to be, so. I'll try to get through this without coffee, so bear with me. Um, so the city secretary's office, I'm sure you all are aware, we're made up of three employees. They're here this evening, I just wanted to introduce our team members. We have Karen McCoy, she is our executive assistant. She was hired in Highland Village in 2001, and she has twenty-three years of municipal government experience. Ingrid Rex, say hi. Um, Ingrid was hired in 2021, is our deputy city secretary and records coordinator. She has fourteen years of municipal government experience. She was with the town of Flowermount prior to this, so we're excited to get her. And then I came to the city in September of 2015, and I have twenty-seven years of municipal government experience. So that's our little team of three. As I said, I'm sure you all know everyone, but I just kinda wanted to give you a little bit of background there, so.
I have almost as many years of experience combined as John is old.
John's only twenty-nine, what are you talking about? She was, she's here.
So she conveniently was. She left.
She knew, here she comes.
I would just like to say I'm glad that we stole something from Flowermount.
Yeah, exactly.
I know, right? I know, I thought you'd be more excited about that. Areas of responsibility, a lot of people I don't think really realize the day-to-day nature and what we tend to do, so that this is gonna kind of do a broad overview of that. So first and foremost, we do provide support to city council. Do serve as a city elections officer. We cover public information requests, records management, claims. We do process TABC alcohol permit applications. I'll go into each one of these areas a little bit more, this is just kind of an overview here. We do, we're the coordinator for the board and commission appointments that council does every year. Also coordinator of the grant allocations for the nonprofit organizations. We do updates to the code of ordinances. We draft and provide proclamations. We oversee the department and council's budgets, and then just general office duties. So with support for city council, the city secretary's office does do the agenda packet preparation and distribution. We also set up for all of the meetings of council, whether it be a work session, like a Saturday workshop, or a regular city council meeting. Our office does maintain the office holder financial reports, so all of the semi-annual campaign finance reports are filed with us. Prepare and monitor the council's budget, maintain a calendar for the mayor and city council. We also handle registrations and any travel arrangements for council. For elections, we do provide information on upcoming elections for the public council and candidates for city council. So even though like the March primary that's coming up, I try to put information on the website regarding early voting, dates, times, where to go, that kind of thing. Even though that's not technically a city election, I feel like it is a benefit to our residents to have that information there. And I usually provide a link also to Denton County where they can get further information if needed. Do serve as a local filing authority for the city elections, so when we have candidates that are interested in providing their application to run for council, those are all turned into the city secretary's office. We do prepare candidate packets, and we also conduct a candidate orientation. So additionally, we also serve as a local filing authority, oh, I think that's on there twice, sorry, guys, the local filing authority for campaign financial reports. We ensure the election order canvassing documents and any legal notices are administered in accordance with state law. We do maintain an election register for the city. So although we do contract with the county to, for election services, that is for the equipment, the workers on election day, such as that, but there's still some other items that have to be provided by us. So like the order, which will be done this evening actually, legal notices that have to go along with all of that prior to the election, canvassing documents, all of that, like the oath of office even, once the elections are over and things such as that, we ensure that all of that's administered in accordance with state law, so. Public information requests. So we do receive and track requests for city information. Police department tends to handle their public records, but it does kind of funnel with us, overlaps a tad bit. We work closely with them on certain ones. We, most of the requests we get for city information is not something that we have readily available within the city secretary's office. So nine times out of ten, we're working with other departments to gather that information. We do prepare responses and invoices if needed. Not all open record requests result in a fee, it just depends on the volume of the request. I would say probably nine times out of ten, there is no fee. We do process requests for the city attorney and attorney generals needed. Should there be a request that comes through that has any kind of information that the state would say could be excluded? Trying to think, uh, I'm trying to use an example. Like what we've had more recently than not is people ask for like a plat or a drawing of, a blueprint of their homes and the site. Well, some of the sites, if it goes a little beyond their property, it may also include water main information or water lines and infrastructure, that type of things. So lately, the attorney general's office has said that that kind of falls into homeland security potentially, just because of, it's, it's not a great. You wanna be mindful of where that information is, because we're in a different time now with what people can do with that information. So while we don't wanna withhold it by any means, there are instances where it is required, so. We do prepare all of that and get that ready to go to the AG's office if needed. We also ensure compliance with the Public Information Act. Records management, so the city secretary's office also administers the city's records management program. We do record and preserve official city business in the form of minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and other documents as, as needed. So those are, those are maintained within the city secretary's office, we do work with the other departments, that's where the records management program comes into play. Ensures compliance with the Texas State Library and Archives Commission's retention schedules. So the city, the state requires all cities to adopt a records management plan, and with that, there are retention schedules. So we have adopted the ones provided by the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. We also work with the departments on doing their records inventory, storage, and then once records have met their appropriate retention, appropriate disposal of them. Not all records, we do have a lot of records that are permanent retention, ordinances, minutes, resolutions, but there's some others as well. But it oversees the, the lifecycle of that record. So claims, this is one area that I don't think a lot of people realize. Our department, the city secretary's office, is the point of contact for city claims. So while that can involve, if there's an accident involving a city vehicle, it also involves if there's a resident that wants to file a claim against the city. So we're the point of contact for that, we coordinate with the claimant, our insurance carrier, HR if, if needed, and other departments as well. TABC alcohol permits, so if a business is wanting to come into Highland Village, obviously they have to fill out the required paperwork for TABC to get their license. So those have to come through the city secretary's office. We, I verify that with development services that where the business is located, it is within the required zoning that would allow for such. There are many different types of alcohol permits out there, and so we have to make sure that the, what they're requesting falls within the guidelines for, for proper zoning, for what they're requesting. Board and commission appointments, so we do receive and maintain all of the board applications, and we have a database that's been created that provides some, a lot of information, since we do have term limits. The service records information that's included in that database comes in handy on that to, to maintain that. We do schedule interviews for the annual appointments, that's the annual interviews that we have during the meeting with council. And then once the appointments are made, we administer them to the oath of office and provide board member training. Nonprofit grant allocations, our department does receive all of the grant applications that come through with the nonprofits to schedule their presentations for council. And then once all of those allocations are determined by council, we do oversee the contract execution and disbursement of the funds to those nonprofit organizations. So there's required paperwork and documentation that they have to provide to us in order to receive that funding as well. The code of ordinances, so city secretary's office does maintain the code of ordinances. We do also supplemental updates as council adopts new ordinances or amends. We ensure that that information is included and updated, whether it be online or through hard copies. We also ensure that the code is available and updated regularly for the public and city staff. The online version is probably the most up-to-date one. I don't know if you've been out there lately, but a different company, we do have a company that works with us to maintain that code of ordinances. So they've kind of gone to a different format. I feel like it's a little bit easier to use, so y'all may wanna check that out if you're, are interested, or call me, and I can help you go through it. And then we also re-coordinate recodification as needed. Recodification is something that's done about every, in a perfect role, I would say ten years, but more likely than not, it's about every fifteen-ish years. Over time, it's just a good idea to go through and recodify, you know, as you're doing updates and supplements that, you know, you're renumbering and moving things around, so it's good every so often to go through and do a full recodification. It is a little pricey though, so that'll be in the upcoming budget stuff for future years, just a heads up on that. Proclamations, we do get requests for proclamations more often than, than you would know, because, because although we do present proclamations at council meetings, there are occasions where people request a proclamation from the mayor, but it isn't presented at a meeting necessarily. So we do coordinate all of those with the mayor, schedule at a council meeting if they're gonna be presented there. We do work with the requesters on drafting those proclamations, sometimes they come to us with a draft, sometimes not. So we try to work with them on that. And then we do provide the, you know, provide it with the official city seal and prepare it for presentation. Departmental and council budget, so we also prepare the annual budget for the. So we also prepare the annual budget for the city secretary's office, which does include, um, council's budget. Um, I do, we do track expenditures. Per state law and city charter, um, an official record copy is kept within the city secretary's office. We do file a copy of the final budget with the county. I don't know if everybody realizes that, but that is a state law. Um, and then we maintain a copy of the budget. While it is on, um, the website, we do have a copy, um, for residents if they want to come in and visit me, visit me of those, so. We don't get many requests for those. Most people, I don't think now realize it's online and they, um, they'd rather access it that way. And then general office duties, we do con- conduct research as needed. Sometimes we'll have to look into things, um, like an easement document maybe that we're looking for. Um, it, and it's random and it can vary from day to day, so, um, we do process documents, um, that are filed with the county and other entities. Anytime Scott has an easement document or a deed, or not a deed, more often I guess easement, um, easement documents and deeds are more of what we file with the county, so our office handles that. Um, we do process required legal notices and ordinances for publication, um, not just on our website, but also, um, in the city's official newspaper, which is the Denton Record Chronicle. And then we publish all advertisements for bids and prepare for official bid openings. So with projects and stuff that we have throughout the city, or not, or that other departments have, um, when they get ready to go out for bid, all of that information's provided to us. We make sure that it's published on the website, we get the notices ready, um, and, uh, coordinate with the newspaper on getting those published. Um, and then as bid to receive, they're turned into the city secretary's office until such time of the bid opening date, and then it's, um, handed off to the department to, to do those bid openings. And then ultimately, those, those bids do come back to us for safekeeping, so. Um, we also process contracts and agreements, so all of the, um, items that you, that council approves, um, for contracts and, and agreements after the council meetings, we go through and, and prepare all of that for signatures to get those executed. Before, we do provide the required notices for city council meetings, maintain the city seal, test documents, that is mainly, uh, like, part of the process with the, um, contracts and agreements is the testing signatures. Sometimes it's the mayor's signature, which we do with minutes. Um, sometimes it's the city manager's signature for contracts and agreements. Um, we do administer oaths and sworn statements for city business, and then also provide notary public for city business. Fun, fun fact, um, along with the tax collector, the city secretary is one of the oldest public servant roles in local government. The role has had many different titles throughout the years and existed in ancient times as the keeper of the archives. Before writing came into use, the position was known as the remembrancer because of their memory served to us, the public record. It's a good thing that's not the case now. So anyways, I know that was not nearly as exciting as the police department earlier, but in a nutshell, that is, um, what the city secretary's office does, so, um, we do keep busy. All of the, um, calls that come through the city, the main line, um, comes through to
We get visitors every now and then, um, that come in and, and just looking for information or have a question, different things, so, um, leave that if you have any questions.
So you get all the forward requests? Freedom of information?
Um, except for the police department.
Okay.
I do work with them, some on theirs, um, like the software that we use, um, mainly work with them on that.
So that gets into the question. Um, all those requests kept online so that you can go back and say, "We've had 22 requests on this particular subject." Is that?
We do have that capability, yes. Obviously for certain types of records, we don't do that. I mean, obviously if there's something that's with the police department, they would not use that record, so, yeah.
I didn't realize you handled the alcohol license permitting.
Yeah. We don't get a lot of those, but we do get them occasionally, and they seem to come in first, so. So.
Cool.
And she is a pretty good remembrancer too, so.
Mine, I like that.
Yeah.
We need one of those in Washington.
Sometimes we need to forgive some pasts.
You have to say.
Something we just want to forget.
Exactly.
Anybody have any questions or anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a great city secretary office.
All right, moving on, item number three, clarification of consent or action items listed on space, city council gender. Does anybody have any questions or need any clarification or anything? First, pick forward.
Do you see the report? Um, so we're going to have a motion to accept that.
Okay. Does anybody hear that? Uh, the report, we're going to get it from chief. In, in the council meeting, hopefully it'll be a motion to accept it, if it's required.
Or that you've received it.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, there's nothing else? Last call. Only once, coin twice. You're adjourned at 6:51.
Welcome to the, let me get to the right one. Welcome to the regular session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, February the 13th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Please join council member Nelson in leading the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Nelson?
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, bless us this evening as we gather for this meeting. Give us the wisdom, guidance, and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. I pray that each of us uphold what is ethical, moral, and wise, and that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we always put the people's interests above our own. We ask Father that you continue to bless, watch over, and protect our residents of Highland Village, our emergency services, our city staff, and our city attorney Kevin and his wife Libby. As we enter election season, we pray that you don't allow these elections to divide us, but rather bring us together as we elect leaders who will serve our values and interests. Finally, Father, we ask that you protect us from those who want leadership for selfish reasons, such as power, financial gain, at the expense of our city, state, and nation. Give us your power of discernment to know their real motives for wanting the offices for which they are running. In all these things, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next thing on the agenda is mayor and council reports, um, on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot 0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, and information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report? Okay, I've got just a couple things. Um, one, uh, tonight, I was hoping to get an update from Dr. Crowell at Briar Hill, but the, the, I think it's the seventh grade, uh, boys and girls basketball teams are playing for district championships tonight, so hopefully they're doing well. Um, and then I just wanted to extend condolences on behalf of the city to a, a family that's going through a hard time in Highland Village tonight. Uh, Mr. Greg Navarro, who I coached in the neighborhood sports flag football league for a number of years, uh, passed away a little over a week ago, fell through his attic, suffered a, a head injury and, and did not recover. His wife Melanie is a good friend, um, so my heart goes out to them. I just want to express our condolences for them. And thank you, Sean, for, um, adding Libby and Kevin to your prayer. Uh, other than that, just a last call, anybody have anything else they wanted to present? If, that being said, I have a proclamation that we'll do. Mark, you want to join me up front? So, uh, I'll give you the nice, pretty blue folder. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'll read this aloud. Whereas, Mark Rutter began his career in the utilities department of the city of Highland Village on January the 5th, 2004, as a utility technician, and whereas he advanced to utility technician two, and then to utility crew leader before moving to the streets department as a street crew leader in 2008, and whereas Mark is known for his willingness to help no matter the task, and whereas Mark has completed over 30 hours of National Highway Institute training and was a certified stormwater inspector, and whereas he has received numerous compliments from the citizens and from his coworkers at Highland Village for his excellent customer service and expertise. customer service and expertise; and whereas on January 5th, 2024, Mark celebrated 20 years of service for the City of Highland Village; and whereas Mark Rutter retires from the Sea of Highland Village with our sincere appreciation for his many contributions, now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim February 13th, 2024, as Mark Rutter Day in the City of Highland Village. Congratulations, well earned, well earned. This is for you? Do you want to?
Yes.
This is your opportunity to curse us all on your way out.
Mayor, Council, I would just like to say thank you very much. It's very exciting for me. Of course, I've never retired before, so I don't know how to act with all this, but thank you, everybody. I'd like to thank Scott for taking a big risk on me years ago, and I'm sure he wanted to probably reconsider his decision sometimes throughout the years, but thank you, Scott. I'd also like to thank, I don't see Don Strange in here, but, Don, there he is. He's in a suit, I didn't recognize him. Don, thank you, buddy. I love you, and I thank you for everything you've done for the Street Department. Ben, you too, and Kimberly and Janie Baum is not here, but those are the people I want to thank, and I would want to, a special thank you to Robert Lively, who really, he's the senior crew leader now, and he's really pulled me through a lot of hard times through the last few years. Robert, I love you, thank you so much. I'll get out of your way. Council, thank you so much. Mayor, thank you.
You bet. You want to get pictures of the family?
I just want to take out an opportunity to kind of reverse that on you, Mark, and thank you for your knowledge, your experience, your dedication to the city for all these years. Go ahead and take a picture, don't worry about me. The knowledge that you've passed on is, is, it's great, and these younger guys, hopefully they learn to pay attention to what you were doing. One of the things that a lot of people don't know about Mark is he's community-oriented, and he started, well, he, he added to our Public Works Community Outreach Program by, with his own funds. He used to purchase the little construction matchbox cars when he was out on the job site, and parents would bring the kids up to see what's going on. He would always excuse himself over to the, to the work truck, grab one of those little matchbox cars for each child that was there, and go over there and present it to them. And for years, he did that out of his own pocket until I learned of it, and then now we have absorbed that, and every vehicle in Public Works is stocked with little matchbox cars. It's just a little neat thing that we put Mark's name on it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Scott.
Mark, what are you going to do in retirement?
Well, sir, I've got three houses in either town, and I built the big garage, and I have a vintage motorcycle collection.
Wow.
Pretty much it.
Wow. Well earned, well earned, well earned.
Thank you so much.
You bet. All right, moving on to item number nine, city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens, is there anything to report?
Mayor, I've got a few things. First off, you probably noticed that the tract of Signal at Highland Village Road in Brazos Highland Shore is fairly under construction. The contract began later than January 22nd. The contract is for 180 days, and we're not expecting to be that long. The Parks and Recreation Department is now accepting applications for artists who would like to participate in the Highland Village Art Festival. This will take place on Saturday, May 4th, in the shops in Highland Village, and the deadline to submit an application is April 5th, and I left my microphone on.
I was wondering why he didn't sound so loud.
Details of the application can be found at highlandvillage.org artfestival. The State of the City, the Joint State of the City Luncheon is scheduled for Tuesday, February 27th, at the Hilden Garden Inn in Lewisville. At this event, Highland Village, Lewisville, and Flower Mound mayors present a city update. You can register and pay for the luncheon through the Flower Mound or Lewisville Chambers of Commerce. And to council, just let the city secretary's office know, and we will get you reserved for that. The next HVBA Community Coffee is scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, at 8:00 AM, right here in this room, and if you wish to attend that, you can RSVP at hvba@highlandvillage.org, and the event is free to attend.
Thanks, sir.
And that is all I have.
So was there a video?
Welcome to Experience Highland Village. I'm Taylor, and I'm here with another great business leader to talk about everything Highland Village. Well, welcome, Jenny.
Thank you for having me today.
Well, the shops at Highland Village is growing. You have welcomed several new businesses into the center. Tell us about those.
Two existing stores are Neon Elephant and Learning Express Stores, which are both owned by the same person. They decided to take those two spaces and create one giant store and relocate it a little bit closer to our northern courtyard area. This kind of created an opportunity for us to make a more children's zone space on property. And in the same month, we had Cheeky Monkeys open, and then moving into December, we were very excited to welcome The Cheesecake Factory. As some people may have noticed, in front of The Cheesecake Factory, we've been doing some recent development. What we really envisioned for that space was opening it up and kind of creating a direct line from 407 down Cherry Creek into the center, kind of getting people right in the middle of the shopping center. This project has actually opened up more parking availability. We have 23 new parking spaces. We also are in the process of completing this project, but we're adding in more green space and landscaping. We have a small stage that we're building next to Lambo's to allow them to have small concerts. So we're excited that we get to kind of create a little bit better space for them, because they've been so active in having music guests at their restaurant on Friday and Saturday nights. So it's going to be a nice little space where everybody can enjoy that music. There's going to be a game area right near the stage as well. And then along both sides in this, this new development, we're going to do a lot of soft seating with shading, so I think it's going to just make it feel more activated and kind of bring the center together.
Well, many people don't know, Jenny, that The Cheesecake Factory isn't occupying the full space. What do you envision in the rest of the space?
So when Barnes &amp; Noble vacated, we had this unique opportunity to sort of reimagine what that space would look like. It was 26,000 feet, so it's a very big space, and Cheesecake Factory was really highly interested in positioning themselves on that southern end for great visibility from 407. So we took that space and we gave them basically about 9,600 feet, and then to the north of them, facing the AMC Movie Theater, is another 10,000 feet. Then we have another section that goes parallel to Francesca's that's about 6,000 feet. With those three spaces, what we're looking at is kind of creating an edutainment slash restaurant vibe. We would love to get another restaurant concept on that north side with a nice big patio. For the smaller space, we're also looking at retail, and we have a couple of great leads for both of those right now.
In the northern corridor of the shops, there's some new improvements as well. What are those?
This encompasses the area of what used to be the Rockfish Restaurant. We really want to make sure we get that space right. We want to find a restaurant concept that's unique to this area, that has a local feel, that's chef-driven, and I'm really excited with some of the restaurants that we're talking to right now, and anticipate something happening there soon. And then in the Snuffers location, which is also near this northern courtyard, we will be welcoming a restaurant called Dragon House, probably sometime in summer.
Well, that is great. Thank you so much, Jenny. This is helpful information. We have been experiencing Highland Village with Jenny at the shops in Highland Village. This is the place to be, so this is where you definitely want to come for everything from food to edutainment, to hanging out and catching a movie.
New and now open in Highland Village.
Hey, y'all, I'm Cody here at Rev's Golf Lounge in Highland Village. Just want to share a little bit about what we have to offer our community. We have four golf simulators in here that replicate professional-level golf courses. We have a driving range to where you can get accurate, incredible feedback on your actual swing. We have hourly bookings available for you to bring your friends in or by yourself. We've got memberships that we offer monthly. If you want to book out for private events, birthday parties, weddings, et cetera, we can be your place to have fun and grow your game of golf. I've lived in the area for the last eight years, and I'm really excited to bring something of value to our community. So you can find out a little bit more about us at revsgl.com. You can book your time online, or you can come in at any time, but we look forward to meeting you, getting to see your game grow.
Now cut that ribbon.
All right, moving on to item number 10, visitor comments. We're addressing visitor comments. Anyone wishing to address the city council must complete a speaker's request form or insurance to the city secretary. In accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors an opportunity to speak, the mayor may impose a three-minute limitation on any person addressing the city council, and there's a 30-minute time limit allotted set for this section. Mr. Miller, did anybody sign up? All right, moving on to consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Those items include number 11, consider approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on January 9th, 2024. Number 12, consider resolution 2024-3110, calling a general election to be held on May 4th, 2024, for the purpose of electing council members to places one or mayor, two, four, and six, authorizing a joint election with other Denton County political subdivisions, and authorizing a contract for election services with Denton County. Number 13, consider resolution 2024-3112, authorizing a task order with Schaumburg and Polk, Inc. for professional engineering services for the Gale Lane, Merriman Drive, Oak Street, and Cedar Drive waterline project. And number 14, receive budget reports for period ending November 30th, 2023. Number 15, receive budget reports for period ending December 31st, 2023. And number 16, receive investment report for quarter ending December 31st, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for any items on the consent? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion. We approve consent agenda items 11 through 16, as read.
And a second? A second. A second. Motion by Mr. Feaster, and a second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to action, we did, we did not meet in closed session, so there'll be no action related to that item. Item number 18, consider resolution 2024-3111, authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-550 Weiss Fire Quick Attack 300RM brush truck from Weiss Fire and Safety Equipment through the city's cooperative purchase agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council. Chief Carter?
Mayor, Council.
Did I get that name right?
Weiss.
Weiss, okay.
Here tonight, too, this is a routine purchase that we, we look at. It's a little earlier than we normally do, but the problem is, is our lead time now is for, as you saw back in November, it was 24 months for ambulance. This one's 18 to 20 months before we get them, so, you know, we kind of look at our, normally our brush trucks, we start looking at them at 13, 14, 15 years. Well, it's 12 years now, time two years, so it'll be about that 14. We are starting to have some maintenance issues with it, so it's, we look at all that, and it can go out past that time, and we're in good shape, but we are starting to have a little bit of maintenance issues with the one we have. So tonight, we come to you asking for approval to purchase a brush truck to replace the one that we have from Weiss Fire Protection. This is going to be off the HEAC contract, and we vetted it out. It will look a little bit different than the one we have right now. We, that one's kind of more of a C truck. This will look more like a standard brush truck. We have gotten the one we have stuck a couple of times and bought them out and drug a little bit, just because of the design of it, and we're going back more to a traditional brush truck, so that's, that's what we're coming tonight and ask you for approval. Oh, the one, and the one that we do have, once we get it, we'll sell it, and those funds will be put back to Ken, so.
Will this come out of next year's budget or this year's budget?
It will come, we will not have to pay for it until we receive it, so.
So basically, next year's budget, and the funds, funds are already accrued?
That's a, that's a Ken question there. I just, I just asked him if it was okay to run this, and he said, now's a good time, so I said, okay.
As he's walking up, the follow-up would be, are we, are we financing this, or are we just paying it straight out like we did the fire truck?
Yeah, we talked about the last two budget year processes, that we were going to look at a tax note to purchase all our larger equipment, and those are seven-year wind maturity, maximum on those. So we're basically going to start a program where every seven years, we go that route and finance those, and so this will be our first one, actually likely towards the end of this calendar year, into FY '25, but it will include this, as well as an ambulance and some Public Works equipment as well, probably somewhere in the $2.5 million range is what we're estimating. But rewarding this because of the lead time, and so by the time that's available, we will should have issued that by that point in time. We will revisit it in this year's budget as well.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So, only thing, just, we're still a little ways out, but right now, I'm hearing for an engine that's 52 months out, so.
Wow.
Ladder, ladder truck, they said last ladder truck, which is, we don't have, and we won't have, is 60 months. So try to plan for five years down the road. That's incredible. So, any, any other questions?
Anybody? I'll entertain, entertain a motion. I'll do it. Sean?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2024-311, authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-550 Weiss Fire Quick Attack 300RM brush truck from Weiss Fire and Safety Equipment through the city's cooperative purchase agreement with Houston-Galveston Area Council, HEAC.
All right, a motion by Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Second, from Mr. Fiorenza. Any further discussion needed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Item number 19, receive Highland Village Police Department's annual compliance report under the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Section 2.131 through 2.138 prohibiting racial profiling. Sergeant McCallie.
Not as fun as the fires brush truck, but mandatory requirement, and as in tradition, I've tried to bring a new person up here to give that presentation, and Sergeant Jay McCallie's here with me tonight. He's been with Highland Village Police Department for over 13 years now, supervised our sergeant for more than three, almost three and a half years now. He's currently one of my five sergeants. He's assigned to an administrative role back where we are to help understand all of these processes, bringing the stuff together, and mandatory requirements, or just the G-Wiz stuff. So it's his first time presenting. It won't be his last, and it's the mandatory stuff, and if, there is really not a lot of sense to some of those numbers, I can tell you what's required, but we follow the requirement by the state law, so, Jay.
Did he give you the questions that we're going to ask in advance?
He did not.
Oh, that could be bad.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I am Sergeant Jay McCallie, and I'm here to present the racial profiling report. So this is our 2023 report. The Texas racial profiling law, Code of Criminal Procedure 2.131 and 2.132 require that every city have a policy banning racial profiling. General Order 332 of the Highland Village Police Department bans racial profiling. CCP 2.132 requires that we have education and a complement and complaint process. Highland Village Police Department has a formal, comprehensive process, including our webpages, where people can go in and make complaints and comments. An annual report is required, and Highland Village provides this report every year. Okay, the requirements of this report, a police officer who stops motor vehicle for an alleged violation of the law or ordinance shall report information relating to the stop, including the gender, the race, ethnicity, the reason for the stop. the reason for the stop, the location, whether the search, whether a search conducted, if so, the reason for the search, whether contraband or other evidence was discovered, if so, a description, and the result of the stop, if there's an arrest, the reason, whether officer used physical force resulting in bodily injury. All the data that's collected via patrol cell phone with Brazza software. So all of the numbers that you'll see is what we collected on our phone. I don't know if y'all have all seen them, but these are the patrol phones that we have now. And these phones, they double as a patrol phone that we use to contact each other, dispatch, command staff notifications. We also use this phone to contact citizens. Like if there's a call where we can handle it over the phone, we use these phones. We don't use any personal phones or anything like that. This phone also has Axon software on it where we can take pictures of evidence and that sort of thing, upload it directly to the system. But it also has all of our Brazza software on it. So whenever we do make a traffic stop, this is what we carry up to the car. I don't know if y'all remember, we used to have a great big ticket rider that we carried. Now it's just this.
Do, are y'all, like that phone, does that go home with you or do you take those in at the end of the shift?
Cars stay with the vehicles now. We used to keep them in the equipment room and you'd check one out, but now they're tied to the vehicle. So if you want to call a particular vehicle, we know which phone to call all the time. Okay, so our 2023 report data, we made a total of 2,997 traffic stops. Of these, 1,835 were on a state highway, so that would be 407, 2499. And 1,152 were on city streets. So that'd be like Briar Boulevard, Highland Village Road, that sort of thing. And then 0.33% were on private property. That'd be Marketplace Boulevard, that sort of thing.
Is that based upon where you actually, where the person pulls over?
No. This is actually based on where the offense occurred. So anytime we make a traffic stop, we, you know, we'll call out where we are at that moment. And then at the end of the stop, we call out and let dispatch know exactly where the offense location was so that our CAD system has the correct location that will match up with our ticket rider.
State Highway 2499?
It is a state highway, yeah. It's a farm-to-market highway, yes. And 2,997 of the stops, or of the total stops, the race was known. And 2,918 of the stops, it was not known. And 79 of the stops, it was known. And a lot of time that's because you can't see in the car, like when you're running radar and that sort of thing, you can't see into the car. And only 79 of the stops did they know the race. And 2,000, you can see the breakdown of the race and ethnicity. So 25 were Alaskan native, American Indian, 133 were Asian, Pacific Islander, 285 were black, 178 were Hispanic, 2,376 were white. The breakdown in genders, 1,279 were female, 1,718 were male.
It's almost 50/50.
Almost, almost 50/50, exactly. It's the reason for the stop. 2,149 were moving traffic violations. That'd be like speeding, running red light, that sort of thing. Seven were pre-existing knowledge. That could be somebody called in to us and said, hey, this driver's doing this. So when we got there, we already knew what the offense was. 559 were for vehicle traffic violations. That would be, you know, burned out taillight, expired registration, that sort of thing. And 282 were violations of the law. So that could be some other offense, like they just stole something and we did a traffic stop on that car. And 2,933, there was no search conducted. And 64, there was a search conducted. Reason for the search, in three of those, it was a consent search, and eight was incident to arrest, and three were inventory of the vehicle, which isn't a search, but we have to see if there's valuables in the vehicle and inventory before it gets towed. And 2,933, there was no search. And in 50 of those, there was a probable cause search. That would be like smelling marijuana, that sort of thing. And we searched the vehicle for probable cause. In 19 of those, no contraband was discovered. In 45, there was contraband discovered. So those are all the ones that we did searches on. Description of the contraband, two of those were alcohol, one was currency, and 37 were drugs.
So when you say contraband and it's currency, is that counterfeit currency or is that just some large amount that's unusual or?
No, the currency would be like if, say we made a stop and they had an unusual amount of drugs, like not an amount somebody would use for personal use, but like they're selling drugs, like a large amount, and they have little small bags, they have a scale, and they have a wad of cash.
Okay.
Then we're going to file against them for possession with intent to distribute. And so that cash could then be seized because it's proceeds from them selling drugs. Other would be 10, stolen property, one, and weapons is two. The results of the stop, 690 resulted in a citation, seven resulted in citation and arrest. 1,842 received a written warning, and 26 received a written warning and an arrest. The rest was based on, seven of them, it was an outstanding warrant, 22 were a violation of the penal code, and four were a violation of traffic law. Was physical force used? 2,995 of the stops, no force was used. And two of the stops, there was force used. Was arrest due to contraband found? And 16 of those, no, and 17, yes. So in summary, the racial profiling data is reported by officers and analyzed using our Brazza's ticket software, and that's the phone that we use on, in the picture. Vehicle and body worn camera video retained for a minimum of 90 days per state law. Highland Village Police Department is in compliance with all Texas racial profiling law requirements. The pictures here have the phone that I just showed you, the patrol phone, and the camera in the middle is the Axon camera that we have on the dash of all the vehicles. And then the body camera, like I'm wearing, is on the right side. The cameras tie together as well. So anytime we're doing a stop, as soon as they activate the emergency lights, both of those cameras turn on. If we're en route to a call, the officers turn on the dash cam and turn on their body cam so that it's recording their whole way to the call. So when they get there, you know, in case something happens on the way or there's a complaint, how they were driving or something, it's all recorded. And that, you know, thank you all for providing the equipment because when we have a complaint or something, we invite the citizen to come and watch the video. Come, come watch the video. And usually they don't want to because they know that the complaint's a little bit exaggerated and it's not what they're saying it was. Because in the video, it's clear, you can, you can see what actually happened on a stop or on a call. So thank you for that. We have the best equipment. Are there any questions?
Council? Got off easy.
Oh, whoa, whoa. Sorry. I hate to make you go back, officer, but can you go back to?
Yes, sir.
Question 14 perhaps? It was the firearms found, and there were two instances of that, I think.
Yes, two weapons?
Yeah, so having a weapon in a vehicle, I don't know all the laws, but what makes it contraband versus a lawful carry?
It's not illegal to have a weapon in a car. But if you're committing a crime and you have a weapon in the car, then it is. So like, say we do a DWI stop and we arrest somebody for DWI and they have a gun in the car. That's a prohibited weapon. You can't have the gun in the car while you're committing a crime.
Okay.
So, you know, that, in that case, we would seize the gun.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Compared to last year, stops up or stops down?
They're up a little bit. I don't know the exact data, but when I was compiling the report, I did notice they're up a little bit. But not a lot. They're pretty consistent.
So I'll add to that. This breakdown is a requirement by the state for us in next council meeting, you're going to get the State of the Union address from Public Safety. Our big presentation where you're going to see different numbers. And we're going, we're going to usually show you the history for three years, somewhere in that range for all of our sections, what we do from citations to warnings to arrests, jails, animal control, you name it, it's all going to be in there. So lot bigger, lot more data and a little more easy for me to answer, looking at all of it at one time instead of trying to guess what it was last year.
That's great.
Is Ollie going to come?
Sure, yes. We're going to highlight some of our fun stuff, okay?
I mean, you got to make a production of it.
We will. We just got a haircut yesterday.
He had, and he made it, Ollie made his acting debut last week. More to come. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we do have to have a motion to receive the report. So would anybody like to, like to make that motion? Mr. Feaster?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we receive the Highland Village Police Department's annual compliance report. Under the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, CCP, Section 2.131 through 2.138 prohibiting racial profiling.
All right, anybody make a second? I'll second. Second by Mr. Cox. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. All right, last item on the agenda is late work session, status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items they need to discuss? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request to have a workshop or I don't know what type of session you put it in. There's a lot of data collecting we do, which we need to do, which concerns our citizens. And if we could have a briefing on the type of data collected and more importantly, the privacy and security that's in place when or if anything gets hacked.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Nope? All right, with that, we are adjourned.
Mayor, real quick, Chief Prime does have it up that he wants to hear quickly.
Update on the status of a project or program right now? We have the trikes out, okay? So they're, they are. We received those about two weeks ago. They came in early. And four, we were able to, we had, we borrowed one from Dallas College to help us train, but we certified four of our people to be master instructors. What that means is they had to go through a three-day course and they're able to instruct our folks now in about six to eight hour day, they can get them out there also. So you're going to see, we have two of them out there. They've got to get 100 hours under their belt before they can do any instructing. But you saw John Kixmiller already took a picture today of Alvin out there with the kids and they're, they're, they're hit so far with citizens or kids, let's say, anybody that, you know, community outreach programs, as mentioned earlier by Scott, they're, they're just part of it. They are. Ollie's part of it and what we do, it's all there and you're going to see them. Thanks if you get the weird comments. I only saw one weird comment on Facebook, but it added to, just like our tool belts carry so many different things, it's added another avenue for us to address the problems and complaints out on the trail systems. And with that being said, Harney and Ben McCalvi are working their program into the school to be ready for spring breakers. So when the spring break hits, the kids will already have the education program under their belt. So that's a huge deal. Then we'll be able, we'll be out there obviously also enforcing and training, educating.
Is that the scooter program?
Yeah.
Pretty much, right. Under the ordinance.
Will it be available to all the children on the weekends or is it just in the school?
We're hitting the schools right now because that's the biggest bang for our buck. And we were knocking those things out at lunch. The plan is over lunch hour so they get a lot of kids done at once. And then the follow-up is us on the trails itself. And then as the summer rolls in, if we're missing people, and part of that, part of the penalty process too, from enforcement, if you violated, you have to go back through that course, which will probably put it on a weekend for the kids in the summertime, so.
Well, I got two boys and I know there's a few homeschool pods that might be interested that aren't in the public schools.
Okay, oh, good point. Great point.
There's quite a few children in Highland Village that are not in public.
Great point, okay. I'm sure Harney and Ben accounted for that already, but I'll remind, or we'll have that discussion to not, to not let them slip through our, our chance, our opportunities. Thank you.
Perfect segue into spring break. So we have a meeting, our first March meeting is scheduled for the week of spring break. There's been some conversation about potentially canceling that meeting. So I wanted to check with everybody to see if, you know, you need, you have a deep desire to meet during spring break or if you're going to be out of town and can't make it. Anybody have a preference, one way or the other?
Cancel.
Light agenda, just push it out.
Yeah. All right, there you go, Angie. And with that, we are adjourned at 7:40. Good night, everybody.